All right, ready?
The hour of 6:30 having come and gone, I will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, May 16, 2023, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Alder Duncan.
Here.
Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is here. Alder Field.
Here.
Alder Field is here. Alder Figaro Cole.
Here.
Figaro Cole is here. Alder Grover Indrajan. Alder Grover Indrajan, here. Alder Hank McKinney. Wait. Alder Knox. Alder Knox is here. Alder Letterman Burris.
Here.
Alder Letterman Burris is here. Alder Madison.
President.
Alder Madison is here. Alder Martinez Rutherford.
Here.
Alder Martinez Rutherford is here. Alder Miyazie. Alder Miyazie is here. Alder Reimel. Alder Reimel is present. Alder Slack. Alder Slack is here. Alder Tischler. Alder Tischler is here. Alder Rever.
Here.
Alder Rever is here. Alder Vitterver. Alder Vitterver is here. Alder Wihelya. Alder Wihelya is here. Alder Bennett. Alder Bennett is here. Alder Curry. Alder Curry is here. And Alder Conklin is excused. Madam Mayor, we're on.
Thank you. Our first item is an honoring resolution, Legisstar 77724, and I will turn it over to Alder Madison to do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor. So in short, Leslie Watkins was a graduate of West High School and the University of UW Madison, where she earned a degree in theater, which led her to New York City to work in theaters on Broadway. And whereas Leslie returned to Madison and became a trailblazer and inspiration to many as one of the first Black women to own a retail business, puppeteria in the downtown. And whereas Leslie was a woman of conviction and a creative force who excelled in marketing, visual arts, fashion, and social media, always bringing her unique perspective to everything she did. And whereas Leslie was a savvy businesswoman with impeccable taste and a keen eye for opportunity, and Leslie was a supportive and accessible leader at all times, willing to lend a hand and share her expertise with those around her, including serving on the Madison Public Market Foundation Board. And whereas Leslie was a mover and shaker in the community, moving in and out of various causes and interests with ease and consistently at the forefront of political issues, social awareness, fashion, and design. And whereas Leslie had a warm and welcoming presence with a contagious enthusiasm for life that made her the brightest light in any room. And whereas Leslie was a well-traveled and well-connected individual who will be most remembered for her ability to bring people together. If Leslie found you interesting, then watch out. You were about to be included in her circle of friends and colleagues that continued to grow and grow over the years from coast to coast and in the middle. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Madison, Wisconsin recognizes and honors Leslie Watkins for her exceptional contributions to the community, her unwavering commitment to excellence, and her extraordinary spirit of creativity, passion, and generosity. Her legacy will continue to inspire generations to come, and her impact on the community will always be remembered with gratitude and admiration.
Thank you, Alder Madison. We'll take that as moved by Alder Madison. We'll take that as moved by Alder Madison and seconded by President Curry. And we have a number of folks here to receive the resolution and who are wishing to speak. We'll start with Jeffrey Sachs. Jeffrey?
Hi, there, everybody. My name is Jeffrey Sachs. First, I just want to thank the council. It gets me emotional. For such a beautiful honor for Leslie. Leslie was my lifelong friend, most likely my oldest and dearest friend. We met when I was 15 and she was 16 at a youth dance group at Temple Bethel. We said hi to each other and really never stopped talking for the next 53 years. I also want to say how proud Leslie and her mom, Pat Watkins, would be to know about this resolution. Excuse me. And to know that folks from the city of Madison think so highly of her that they would go to this length to honor her. It's more than I can imagine that she could ever, ever have thought happen. Leslie is or was all those things mentioned in the resolution and more. She was a very kind and caring and loving person. She believed in fairness and understood that hard work was always one way of moving forward and living a successful life. She learned that from her mother, who she loved deeply and was a great mother and influence on Leslie, me, and all her friends. They were very much family to me and my family. In fact, my father was a researcher in Forest Products Labs for 35 years and brought Leslie in as a tour guide when she was a teenager because she was such a pleasant, bright, smart, and well-spoken young woman. I don't know where to go from here, only to say again, thank you. Leslie was a light in my life, and I'm glad, and I can see that she was a light in many people's lives, and she is missed. And thank you again.
Thank you. Our next registrant is James Thai.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank the city of Madison and Alder Sabrina Madison for honoring Leslie and her legacy to Madison. The one thing that Leslie did was bring us all together. She didn't care if you were gay, if you were straight, if you were black, if you were white, poor or rich. She found something special in everybody and brought us together in her own special way with her cocktail clubs and just her heart and soul. Leslie was very special to both me and Gabriel. And she cried with tears at our wedding, and I'll stop at that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Alex Elisi.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council, and specifically Councilmember Madison. I can't. I swear I was not going to get choked up, so give me just a second. I'm going to catch my breath. Everything James said is true. Leslie was a force, and I was incredibly grateful to be her friend for the decades that I knew her. It's amazing to me that I can say decades. She was one of the earliest people that I met when I moved to Madison. And what an incredible gift, right? To meet a person who's so connected to a city, who knows so many people in so many walks of life, and who loves to network. I mean, she loved nothing more than to make a friend and keep a friend and connect a friend. And it was incredible, and I met so many people through her. If it weren't for her, I wouldn't know these people over here. I can't count the number of people that I met as a result of my friendship with Leslie. And that networking ability, it was something, I don't know if it was inherited from her mother or if her mother taught it to her, but her mother was the same way. Pat was the same kind of force and the same kind of incredible human. I'm really glad she's being recognized for a lot of reasons. Her contributions to the city and the work that she did on behalf of the Black community in the city and the trails that she blazed in this city, but mostly. I'm really, really glad that it's been written in history now that she is the, was, pardon me, she's still very much alive for me, that she's the force that she is and that she's the friend that she is and that she blessed all of us with her presence while she was here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And last, we'll see if Dino Maniachi wants to speak.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the city and just say thank you for recognizing my friend. And I think she would look out at all of you today and be very proud to see what she believed in and fought for. Thank you.
Thank you. What a round of applause for all of the registrants. We'll stand informal while the alder takes a photo with everybody and their proclamations. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor and thank you all again for coming. That will bring us to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Alder Vitterver.
Items 34 and 35, disclosing that I'm an employee of the Department of Health Services, Division of Public Health, not involved in any decision-making related to these funds.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm an employee of UW Madison. There are a couple of items relating to UW Madison on the agenda which my vote will not be influenced by.
Just let the clerk know which items at some point. Alder Tischler.
I'm also an employee of the university, but doesn't affect anything.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Slack.
I'm an employee of the university, and it will not affect my vote.
Thank you, Alder. Until the university is a large employer in our community. Are there any other disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Figure out which one is the correct version, sorry. A consent agenda is moved with recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings, except, one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, or, two, items which alders have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. This document lists agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, and items introduced from the floor. Item with recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda item six, legislative file number 77208, creating section of the MGO to change the zoning of 437 through 445 West Johnson Street, 430 through 440 West Dayton Street, and 215 to 221 North Basset Street, 4th Alder District. The agenda correction is the appropriate referrals to Plan Commission on May 22 and Common Council on June 6. Agenda item 14, legislative number 77725, report submitting alder committee appointments to the Common Council Executive Committee, business presented by the president of the council. Recommended action is to adopt substitute. Madam Mayor, I have a, I don't know if it's point of order is correct, but I was informed that the dates for CCEC appointments are listed incorrectly in the current resolution. It's a one-year appointment.
So I think you probably can include that in the consent agenda unless anybody objects.
Okay.
So the recommended action would be? Create a substitute.
I think if there's no objection, we can just note.
All right, so we'll include in the consent agenda motion a note that the terms are one year, not two-year.
So I believe the corrected expiration date would be April 8, 2024? Thank you. Agenda item 17, legislative file number 76668, awarding Public Works contract number 8,00698, repairing and sealing pavement cracks local streets 2023. Report of the recommended action is to place on file without prejudice from the Board of Public Works, and that's an agenda correction. Agenda item 18, legislative file number 76669, awarding Public Works contract number 8699, repairing and sealing pavement cracks major streets. The recommended action from the Board of Public Works is to place on file without prejudice. Agenda item 40, nope. Agenda items excluded by, one, request of alders, or, two, speakers registered by 6:30 May 16. Agenda item 16, legislative file number 76537, awarding Public Works contract number 8703, resurfacing asphalt pavement pulverizing, milling and paving in the 2nd, 4th, 6th, 10th, and 14th Aldermanic districts. There are speakers registered. Agenda item 32, legislative file number 77845, granting a temporary Class B retailer license concurrent with street use permit requested by Madison Festivals, Inc., for the Run Mad Town event occurring on the 700 block of State Street, May 27 and 28. Speakers registered. Agenda item 44, legislative file number 77615, Chief of Police, first quarter report of Madison Police Department. Alder Vitterver has requested exclusion. Agenda item 49, legislative file number 77406, amending section 33.56 of the MGO to update membership composition, requested to be excluded by Alder J. L. Curry and registered speaker. Items introduced from the floor, legislative file number 77836, authorizing Madison Water Utility to use water well solutions as a sole source provider of a Lamaflo device and its installation in Unit Well 14, a water supply well, introduced by Alder Miyazie to be referred to the Finance Committee on May 22 and back to the Common Council on June 6. And legislative file number 77924, approving an extension of a provisional appointment for Kelly Post from June 9, 2023, until such time as the position of Park Street Use Staff Team Coordinator is filled on a permanent basis or until December 9, 2023, whichever is earlier, also introduced by Alder Miyazie, to return to the council on June 6.
Thank you, President Curry. Are there other exclusions that are requested from the consent agenda? Alder Bennett.
Agenda item six, Legisstar 77208.
All right, item six will be excluded. Are there any further exclusions from the consent agenda? Not seeing any, so let me run through again quickly. On item 14, the motion is to adopt the substitute with the note that the terms end on 4/8/2024. On items 17 and 18, the motion is to place on file without prejudice. The following items will be excluded, 6, 16, 32, 44, and 49. And we have two introductions from the floor, Legisstar 77836 and Legisstar 77924. Any additional items? If not, President Curry, a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda with the recommendations therein. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. And we'll go on to public comment. And public comment. Sorry, loading. Our first item with speakers is item 16, which is awarding Public Works contract. Our registrant is Dennis Maungy of District 7. We have Dennis.
There's no one in the meeting with that name?
Thank you. I do not see anyone in the room, so we'll go on to item 32, which is a temporary Class B retailer license. Beth Salinger of Mundelin, Illinois wishes to speak.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Great, thank you so much for having me. My name is Beth Salinger. I am the new race director of Run Mad Town. I apologize for the tardiness of my permit request. We had thought that we were going to be serving beer through the university, and at the 11th hour, they backed out, which is why we are coming to you to request our Tempe beer permit. We are giving away free beer, one beer per registered participant. There is actually a tag on their race bibs to ensure that they only get one beer. We do have security and a dedicated staff person to our beer garden, which will be on State Street in the 700 block.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the registrant? Seeing no questions, thank you. And then our next item with registrants is item 49, amending sections of the ordinances to update the membership composition of the Transportation Commission. Grant Foster of District 15 wishing to speak.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm registered tonight in opposition to the proposal, the proposed ordinance change that would remove the existing membership requirements from the Transportation Commission. In terms of background, I've served on the Pedestrian Bicycle Motor Vehicle Commission, the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee, the Madison Area MPO Policy Board, the Transportation Policy and Planning Board, and the Transportation Commission over the course of the last eight years, and that included attendance at every meeting of the Transportation Ordinance Rewrite Committee. While on the Ped Bike Motor Vehicle Commission, I fulfilled the membership requirement of bicycle user. On the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee, I fulfilled the requirement of a PBM-VC member. On the Transportation Commission, fulfilled the requirement of alder member, Transportation Policy and Planning Board crossover member, and MPO crossover member. And on the Transportation Policy and Planning Board, I also fulfilled the requirement of the Board of Public Works crossover member. I was also the primary sponsor of the ordinance that was recommended by the Transportation Policy and Planning Board and Transportation Commission and adopted by council just a few months ago, and worked for years to develop that proposal with many conversations with staff, other board and commission members, and members of the public. The current ordinance language is a product of significant review and deliberation by many people experienced and knowledgeable with our transportation policy. There was discussion about the proposed membership requirements, and the ones that remain in ordinance are those that were overwhelmed. remain in ordinance are those that were overwhelmingly supported by everyone that reviewed the ordinance. There was no discussion at council to remove any of those membership requirements. All of the current requirements are requirements that already existed in the transportation bodies that predated the Transportation Commission, and several of the previous membership requirements were actually already eliminated with the current ordinance. These requirements are not too much, but are really the bare minimum needed to ensure a membership of the Transportation Commission that is representative. I urge you to follow the recommendation of the Transportation Commission and to place these membership changes on file. Thank you.
Thank you, are there questions for the registrant? Seeing none, thank you. That is all of our public comment tonight. So we will go on to item 6. Item 6 is legisstar 77208, substitute creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning at a variety of properties on West Johnson, West Dayton, and North Basset. On item 6, President Curry?
Madam Mayor, I think Alder Wiheli is trying to.
Alder Wiheli, you can ring in?
The item number 16 was excluded, and my constituent wants me to.
Alder, we're at number 6?
Yeah, I know, but then will the staff be there to answer questions for item 16, since the registrant did not show up?
The staff should be here until you vote on it, Alder.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And Alder, if you could please ring in, using your button, otherwise I'm not guaranteed to see you. Alder Curry, can we have a motion on item 6, please?
Move to adopt substitute.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the substitute on item 6. Alder Bennett, did you have questions?
No. I did alternate motion.
Alright, so are there questions on item 6? If not, a motion, an ultimate motion, Alder Bennett?
Yes, just like an amended motion, to instead refer to the June 12th Plan Commission meeting and the Common Council June 20th meeting, and I'm happy to explain that.
So Alder Bennett moves referral, I'm sorry, say again, to the June 12th Plan and June 20th Common Council? Is there a second? Moved and seconded to refer. Alder Bennett, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, so I made this motion because, the reason why it was referred in the first place was for additional community input and feedback, and our Plan Commissioner should remember that. But, you know, with the date coming up so soon, there is not enough time to have substantial community input and feedback, and also for the neighborhood association to meet with, the developers. Throughout this process, I'm just looking at, um, there, the neighborhood postcard for the meeting was sent out April 27th, which was a week before the Plan Commission meeting, which is obviously not enough time to gather feedback and input, and because this development will have a large impact in the community, it will demolish like 25 units of naturally occurring affordable housing, you know, displacing the current residents, and also affecting the future of that downtown area, there's like, you know, just a general ask to have more input and feedback. So that's why I'm requesting to refer it out to a future meeting, so that can be done and gathered.
Alder, motion is to refer, is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, oh, Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. I can speak to this one from the Plan Commission meeting. As a Plan Commissioner, we did discuss referral from approving at our meeting last week to May 22nd at the request of the Alder representing the area with a discussion with some folks, with the input of some folks who came to the Plan Commission meeting asking for a delay for community feedback, as my colleague mentioned. We noted that the proposal had final Urban Design Commission approval pending, with a couple of recommendations for Plan Commission. We discussed a date for when to move, or when to refer the proposal again to, and decided not to put it off to June. The developer needs to secure their capital, and so that was the rationale there. With capital markets changing, they wanted to secure it sooner than later. I wanted to offer that perspective as Commissioner.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion on the item? If not, the motion is to refer to the June 12th Plan Commission and the June 20th Common Council meeting. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of referral? Alder Field objects, would you like to be voted no, or would you like a roll call?
I'd like to be voted no.
So Alder Field will be noted as voting no? Is there any other objection? If not, we'll record that as a 19 ayes and 1 no on item 6, and the item passes. And that will take us to item 16. Item 16 is legisstar 76537, awarding public works contracts for asphalt pavement pulverizing, milling, and paving. On item 16, President Curry?
Move to adopt.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adopt. Alder Wiheli, you have questions?
Madam Mayor, let's see.
The city engineer is here.
Is it Chris who's here?
Jim, city engineer Wolf is here.
So if Jim can walk us through the process, my constituents sent an email regarding that the fair, the process was not fair, and you know, the highest bidder was accepted without putting into consideration for local employment. So I just want to know what was the process, and how was the highest bidder accepted, and then what was the other process in term of the Department of Civil Rights?
Yeah, certainly. So with any of our public works contracts that have an estimated value of $100,000 or more, our engineers work with the Department of Civil Rights to include a small business enterprise goal. So that goal is calculated by the Department of Civil Rights for the contract, and it's based on the scope of work and what types of contractors in that small business enterprise list, I'll just note SBE from now on, would be possible candidates to work under that contract. And then the general contractors, when they're bidding on that particular public works contract, they either have to document that they're achieving that SBE goal, or they need to provide documentation as part of a good faith effort to try to achieve that goal. And then when we're looking to award the contract, we look to award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. And so part of being responsible is either achieving that SBE goal, or putting forth the appropriate documentation for the Department of Civil Rights to confirm that you put in that good faith effort to try to achieve that goal. Now, on this particular contract, the lowest bidder on this one was deemed not responsible, because the Department of Civil Rights did not believe they put in the appropriate effort to reach that SBE goal on this contract. And so, and that's through submitting paperwork and documenting contacts that you've made with folks on the SBE business list. And so even though they were determined to be not responsible by the Department of Civil Rights, they, there is a process to appeal that decision, and the contractor that was the low bidder appealed the decision. And there was a hearing before the SBE Appeals Committee, which is made up of members of the Affirmative Action Committee and members of the Board of Public Works. And so, and that is a quasi judicial type hearing. And then that SBE Appeals Committee voted unanimously to confirm the Department of Civil Rights decision that the lowest bidder on this particular contract was not responsible, and did not provide the appropriate documentation, showing that they made a good faith effort towards reaching that SBE goal on this contract. So then we look to award the contract to the next lowest bidder, so it wasn't actually the highest bidder in this sense. There were three bidders on this contract, so we looked to the second lowest bidder, and their price came in underneath the, our estimate for this contract still. And they also put forth the appropriate documents to work towards that SBE goal and that good faith effort. So the Department of Civil Rights confirmed that they were responsible bidders. So in that, in that case, we are looking to award this contract to the lowest responsible bidder. So sorry if that was kind of the long way, but hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you, Jim. So as a follow-up, from the DCR, or Department of Civil Rights perspective, the ordinance says that, you know, they have to comply in certain ways. Are there any language that applies in term of hiring, you know, City of Madison residents for this kind of contract, rather than hiring contractor who's outside Madison?
So it's not specific to City of Madison residents? You know, a lot of the small business enterprise contractors are local, some are outside of the city as well, but there isn't a requirement that they have to be within the city, I don't believe.
And is that from the DCR, or just the general contractor from the, from your department, engineering?
That would be both.
Okay.
I would just add, we have a purchasing preference for local businesses that are registered as local, it's not specific to Madison, but it's the region, but it's only a point advantage, it's not a requirement.
The reason why I ask this question is my constituent who contacted me said that as a taxpayer, even it's preferable to have contractor who are more in the residents of Madison, and just want to relay that to you on the record, so, yeah. Thanks, Jim.
Alder Knox?
Is it on? I guess my question was, are there any other appeal rights available, since I believe the city is following the federal regulations? So has the person exhausted his federal appeal options in this case? Because I'm kind of surprised we would go move forward with, you know, a contract if they still have some other appeal rights available to them. Do you know that, Jim?
Jim, are you aware of any further possibility of appeal?
I am not. And I think in this case, the appeal was specific to that SBE goal, good faith effort, and so that's why it went to the SBE Appeals Subcommittee.
Is Norm available?
Norm is not here, I'll see if the attorney has any further information.
I was only going to add that there could be an appeal to court. The decision of the committee continues until somebody aisles and seeks injunction.
Okay, so unless they file, you'll continue with the process? Because it's my understanding they definitely would have some federal appeal rights, because they're following SBA federal guidelines.
Well, this is a local ordinance, SBE Appeals Committee, so I believe the appeal would be in a state court?
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. Okay, thanks, that was just my question.
Thank you, Alder. Any further questions on item 16? If not, the motion is to adopt, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Alder Knox, would you like to be noticed as voting no, or would you like a roll call?
I'm just going to abstain on it.
Alder Knox will abstain? Is there any further objection? If not, we'll record a vote of 19 ayes and 1 abstention, and the item passes. And that will take us to item 32. Item 32 is legisstar 77845, which is granting a temporary Class B retailers license concurrent with a street use permit for Madison Festivals, Inc. President Curry?
Move to adopt under suspension.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Thank you, Alder. Moved and seconded to adopt under suspension of the rules. Are there questions on item 32? Is there discussion? Alder, figure a call?
Yes, I have a question for Attorney Haas.
Go ahead.
Is it possible to approve this with the condition to have A R C do the review tomorrow in their meeting?
Well, I assume it's not on the agenda for A R C, it would be too late to add it to the agenda if their meeting is tomorrow. It is, it is on the. I think that would be allowable.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
So if we're in discussion, yes, then I would like to make that motion that Vice President Figaro Cole just referred to, and that is, I'm forgetting how to word it, to approve on the condition that they attend tomorrow's, May 17th, A R C meeting for review.
So just so I'm clear, let's let the attorney advise you on the formation of that motion, how about?
I've been thinking along same lines as the mayor, just to make clear what the condition is, is it that A R C review, or A R C approve? What is the?
Oh, there's a difference, okay, on the condition of A R C approval.
Okay, so the motion is to approve with the condition that the temporary license must be approved by the A R C at their 5/17 meeting? Is there a second? There's a second. So that's, everybody clear on the motion? Alder Bennett, do you want to speak to it?
Sure. I am a bit frustrated that this is on the agenda, which is my fault, that it's on the agenda, but I, I am frustrated because this organization has submitted liquor license applications behind, like late, without enough time for Alcohol License Review Committee several times, and then have gone to the Alders to basically ask them to bail them out, and we graciously have. However, it's at the point now where it's very, very frustrating. We even had that special Common Council meeting last year for this very same reason, with the very same rhetoric that, don't be late next time. So honestly, yeah, actually, don't be late next time. And I think that there are real equity concerns about consistently providing accommodations, when I really, where I wonder if a small business were to do the same thing repeatedly, would they receive the same accommodations? I honestly don't think so. And it, having the privilege of this name, and having the privilege of running this race, and wanting to do so right, you should be able to at least getting your applications on time, and respect the time that we give you and the accommodations that we have given you in the past. So that is what I have to say right now.
Thank you, Alder. Is there further discussion on item 32? Alder Vitter?
I'm just going to go ahead and say it, why does a running race need to serve beer afterwards? I mean, really? So I would be in favor of entertaining a motion, or I'll make a motion to actually place on file without prejudice.
Alright, Alder Vitter will move to place on file without prejudice, is there a second? Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice? I don't think we can get any farther down without voting, so no more motions until we vote on this one. Is there discussion on the motion to place on file? Seeing no discussion, the motion before us is to place on file without prejudice, is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Alder Knox? Alder Knox? Alder Knox?
I want to speak.
So, so.
I'm planning on voting.
Do you, you wish to record as voting no? Do you wish to have a roll call? Alder Field is going to request a roll call, so we'll just skip to that. All right. So on the motion, which is to place on file without prejudice, Alder Slack, did you just speak to it?
I just want to make sure I'm clear what I'm voting on. So if you vote yes on this, then the initial motion to approve with the condition fails. We put on file without prejudice.
That's correct. So the, the motion before you is to place on file. If it's placed on file, the license is not granted, and we're done, and we go on to the next item. If the motion to place on file fails, we'll return to the neck, the previous motion, which is to grant with condition. Okay? Oh, my goodness. Alder Bennett?
Sure. And I also wanted to write some additional information to my colleagues that, as far as I understand, maybe Alder Viver would have that historic knowledge. I know, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. But if this license doesn't get approved, the race will still go on. And also, they could still find other accommodations for getting beer, like going to the union or another local establishment. So I just wanted to find that information as well before moving into the vote.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yep, I was just wondering if you could give us some background for those of us that are new, what happened last time, or what the reason that they're late? Is it just they're late, or so that we could make a decision?
I'm going to interpret that potentially as a question for staff. I don't know if there are any staff here that have any information on this. Doesn't look like it. Alder Viver, I think it's up to you if you want to answer that question. But with, with Alder Figueroa Cole's permission, oh, you put your hand down, never mind. Alder Viver, give us the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, the background is, these are peculiar applications that are required by Madison Ordinance to come to the common council. Most Class B picnic beer permits are actually administratively approved by the police department and the city clerk's office. So the reason why this is before us tonight, and before the ALRC on our agenda at least tomorrow night, is simply because this is in conjunction with the street use permit using city property. This event, Run Mad Town, has been held for many, many years, pre-pandemic, in the campus area, on Memorial Day weekend. This isn't a new event. I don't know if the organizer is new or not to this. What I do know, recall, is in the last few years, they have made arrangements with the Wisconsin Union, namely Memorial Union, to have the finish race participants, I presume they're all finishers, but anyway, the race participants to enjoy their adult beverage post-race on Wisconsin Union property, on UW property, not city property. And as you heard the registrant say earlier, that apparently arrangement fell through, Wisconsin Union's no longer interested in that. I don't know the specifics. What I can tell you is, we have quite a history of having to call special common council meetings over the years for these Class B picnic beer permits in conjunction with street use permits because of late application. So this is not the first example of that. What is new is that the deputy city clerk flagged this and said, you know, the council meeting where this would normally go would be after the race, so if we want to allow them, this application to be adopted, or granted, I should say, it has to be on this agenda. And as the alder of the district, Alder Person Bennett, agreed to that, and that's why it's on the agenda this evening, and I guess council leadership as well, is on the agenda this evening. Madison Festivals, Inc. doesn't actually organize this event, although you'll see they are the applicant. Under the requirements of Chapter 125 of the Wisconsin statutes, only bona fide membership organizations like fraternal and veterans organizations are allowed to apply for Class B picnic beer permits. So I think Madison Festivals is doing this more as a favor than actually being involved in the organization of it. What is true is that Madison Festivals and other similar organizations, as I said earlier, do have a history of some late applications, to the point that Madison Festivals informed me earlier this year that for the, for the events that they actually sponsor, there are two of them in Madison where these same applications are required, Taste of Madison and the Madison Marathon, they were severing ties with the organization that organizes those events with them, so that those applications would not be late in the future. So I don't want to sully Madison Festivals' good name here, because they, they absolutely have, are quite knowledgeable about the deadlines now and have ensured that for the two events that they actually organize on their own, they would not, they will not be late anymore. Again, this is organized, I believe, by a, a business in, in Chicagoland, and I don't know their exact relationship with Madison Festivals, but Madison Festivals clearly is the applicant. They signed the application on their behalf. I don't know if that helped with the further explanation or not. The last thing I'll say is, to Alder Vividar's concern that this is Wisconsin and that for years and years and years, we've had similar applications, that at the finish line, you have an adult beverage, and thus the Madison Marathon tradition I mentioned earlier in their previous late applications.
Thank you, Alder Viver. Vice President Figueroa Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, I mean, I am annoyed, and I'm not going to repeat everything that Alder Bennett mentioned, and I agree with her statement. I also agree with Alder Vitiver's to put it on file, but not necessarily because of the statement that she made. I would love not to have that kind of reward at the end of any activity, but that is something like Alder Viver just mentioned, it is the way that, that happens in Wisconsin, so we definitely need to find ways to change that culture. So I will be voting in favor of putting it on file, just on the grounds that I don't feel it is a equitable, unfair, fair choice to, to bail this group out again when we wouldn't do the same for the small business in our communities. So I agree with, with the sentiment earliest expressed, but that wouldn't be equitable either, because if this had gone through the ALC, it would have gone into the consent agenda unapproved. So the reason I'm supporting putting it on file, just wanted to make clear, is because of being, once again, late. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no further Alders in the queue wishing to, Alder Slack?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just confused about whether it is this larger umbrella business that has a habit of being late, or whether this particular vendor, for reasons out of their control, had to apply late, related to the union pulling their partnership.
Alder, I admit to sharing your confusion, and I think the only person that can probably answer that that's in the meeting is the registrant. We don't normally go back to public comment, but she does have her hand up. So is there any objection to allowing the registrant to speak again? I'm not seeing any objections, so if we can, oh, yes, Alder Bennett? Alder Bennett?
No, it's okay.
Alder Latimer-Burris?
Well, whether or not the registrant speaks again, I wanted to ask the question of, if it was referred to the licensing, the Alcohol Licensing Committee, would they be able to sort out these issues tomorrow?
They would certainly have the opportunity to talk with the registrant and presumably ask and have answered questions that were raised here. All right, so I'm not seeing objections, so we'll ask Beth Salinger to be unmuted again, please. And Beth, I, I think you've heard the questions, but I, I think the most salient question is regarding the relationship with Madison Festivals, Inc., and the reason that you were not able to put in your application on time?
Absolutely. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again. First, my street use application was in very early, and the reason I did not put in the Temp B license is because the union had, they were going to cater the event, meaning that they were going to serve the beer on Library Mall, which is where the race, the post-race party is. In April, they said, oh, it's Memorial Day weekend, we don't have the staff, we can't do it. The same day I got that email, I reached out to Kelly Post to see if it's possible to get the Temp B. She forwarded me to Heather and licensing. I filled out all the paperwork the same day, paid the permit the next day. So it, it was an error, an unfortunate thing that happened, that we're running so late. And this is my first time as the race director of Run Mad Town, and so now I know just to plan for the inevitable and plan much earlier next year. On our relationship, Run Mad Town, or Madison Festivals, is the official charity partner of Run Mad Town. So donations and part of our proceeds go to Madison Festivals. I think that answers the questions. I, I want to make sure and really be clear that Madison Festivals, it is not their fault that the permit was late. I, I want to be really, really clear. This fell on me as my first time being the race director, my first time filling out the paperwork, and so I apologize for all of that.
Thank you. Alder Field, is it a question? Go ahead, Alder Field. Oh, okay. Are there any other questions while we have the registrant unmuted? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. Alder Field, discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciated hearing again from the registrant. Based on information shared, I will be voting against the motion to place on file, and if that fails, I will be supporting the motion to approve depending on the ALRC decision tomorrow.
Thank you, Alder. Is there further discussion? Alder Evers?
Mayor, I too will not be supporting the motion to place on file. I don't think we should be punitive here in this body in a circumstance such as this, and that feels like we're also kind of micromanaging what people can do after a race. We may have reasons personally to think, I certainly do, that having an alcoholic beverage after a race is not perhaps the smartest thing, but I don't want to judge that for somebody else, and I don't think this body should be engaged in such things. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. The motion is to place on file without prejudice. Is there any further discussion? Alder Bennett?
Okay, I know, I know, I'll stop talking after this. But I also, I don't know, Alder Figueroa Cole just sparked something in me, and I had to, I had to agree with that as well. Just like, for context, I, I really don't want to punish anybody, however, I do strongly believe in equity and fairness. I recently saw in this area, literally very close to this, it was maybe down the street, where a small business submitted a liquor license for like, for a little area of like seven people that would be inside it, and they made a whole safety plan and like decisions about like security, who's going to be there, and that was all required, just to like, not required, but all just to get their alcohol license approved. And it was a very cumbersome process for a very small business. And then, you know, to see time and time again, we should at this point know to at least submit the alcohol license. I understand that it might have fallen on you, Beth, you didn't know, however, it's with an organization, and I don't think like the same would be done, where we think in this specific area that we're looking at, downtown area, one, there would want to be community feedback, two, we'd want to think about like, community safety and input about where people are even going to go after they are done drinking or whatever. I understand after a race, anybody can go to a bar and have a beer or whatever, or if you want to pass out your beer, that's fine. However, I think that when we think about the broader scape of like, everybody else that's going through the same process, how can we make it equitable for every single person that goes through the process? And to me, it seems to consistently provide accommodations is not equitable.
Thank you, Alder. Other Alders in the queue wishing, oh, Alder Harrington McKenney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarification, before the vote, would you please explain again what we're voting for? Because I think that there is some, there may be some disconnect here, and so I want to make sure that I'm voting correctly. That is my request.
Absolutely, Alder. It's my pleasure, and seeing no other Alders in the queue, I will do so now. So the item before us is a temporary alcohol license that the applicant is requesting for this event. The motion is to place that on file, which would be to not allow the license, to not grant the license. If the item is, if, so, an aye vote is to place on file, to not grant the license. A no vote is to keep the item before us, right? Which then would allow us to go back to the motion to grant with conditions. So if you wish them to not be able to serve alcohol, you should vote aye. If you would like them to, to continue talking about granting the license, you should vote no. Good? All right. The motion is to place on file without prejudice. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Duncan?
No.
Alder Duncan, no. Alder Evers?
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Field?
No.
Alder Field, no. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Yes.
Alder Figueroa Cole, aye. Alder Grovindarajan?
No.
Alder Harrington McKenney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKenney, no. Alder Knox?
No.
Alder Knox, no. Alder Latimer-Burris?
No.
Alder Latimer-Burris, no. Alder Madison?
No.
Alder Madison, no. Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
No.
Alder Martinez-Rutherford, no. Alder Miyazaki?
No.
Alder Miyazaki, no.
No.
Alder Rumel?
No.
Alder Rumel, no. Alder Slack?
No.
Alder Slack, no. Alder Tischler?
No.
Alder Tischler, no. Alder Viver?
No.
Alder Viver, aye. Alder Viver, aye. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Conklin is excused. President Curry?
No.
President Curry, no. We have four ayes, 14 noes. No, sorry, 15 noes, I apologize.
I was going to say, I had 15 noes. So with 15 noes, the motion fails, and we are back to the motion to grant with the condition that the ALRC approve the license at their 5/17 meeting. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of granting the license with that condition? Alder Curry?
Without condition means it won't be?
With, with that condition, sorry. So the, the motion is to grant with the condition that it be approved by LRC. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we record that vote, which means that the license is granted pending approval of the ALRC tomorrow night. Now that we've waded ourselves through that set of motions, move on to item 44, which is Legislative File 77615, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances to update membership composition. On item 44, President Curry?
44.
Move to?
Just on 44.
Oh, I, I have it wrong on my consent agenda, then.
Sorry, it's the report of the police chief.
Oh. It's the incorrect.
Yes, thank you. I have it now. And item 44, which is Legis 77615, the Chief of Police First Quarter Report. And the motion is to accept. Is there a second? Is there a second? Knox will second. Thank you. To accept. Alder Vitterver?
I had hoped that Chief Barnes would be able to be with us to present the highlights of the report. Unfortunately, my understanding is he's not available. And so my understanding is that he'll be available later this summer to present the annual report. And so we will look forward to that at that time.
Thank you, Alder. That is my understanding as well, that he regrets not being able to be here. But we were hoping to work with council leadership to make a time for him to present. With that, the motion is to accept the report. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, the report is accepted. And we're on to Item 49, which is Legis 77406, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances to update the membership composition of the Transportation Commission. Now, President Curry?
Move to adopt substitute?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the substitute. Are there questions? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is Attorney Brist here? Is he?
I don't believe we have Attorney Brist, but we have Attorney Haas.
Okay. Attorney Haas, you were not at the, so my question would have been the discussion of the content of the very robust discussion at the Transportation Commission. Do you have any update on that? You were not physically there, but do you have any update at all?
I'm not sure what you mean, Alder, by update. Update about the?
So the discussion. And I held it because there was a very, very robust discussion at the commission meeting of members discussing this very item. And they put it on file. And I wanted to recapture some of that discussion. I did not ask former Alder Foster, because I thought that I would be getting it from you.
So a couple of things I can tell you. I was not at the meeting, I believe.
Director Lynch is here. Yeah, Director Lynch is here.
Okay.
He may be able to address that. If you have questions about the process or where we're at or what's?
Okay, I'm specifically asking for a discussion related to the meeting. I don't know, Tom, you were not at that meeting. Did Yang update you on some of the concerns that were expressed by members related to this particular ordinance?
Yeah, I've been able to talk with several people. I wasn't at that meeting. I've been away with my daughter's graduation and a conference. I think the gist of the conversation was is that the, I think the commission members felt a high value in making sure that certain representations were in the commission and represented within the commission. For instance, cyclists, transit users were in there, as well as wanted to acknowledge the importance of having cross-communication with other commissions, city commissions, like the Board of Public Works and the like. So I think while they perhaps feel like, well, maybe this time around, everything would be okay. But in the future, if we had different mayoral leadership, different council leadership, perhaps future leadership could choose not to have those special representations within the committee. For instance, if it was an option to appoint someone who was knowledgeable on transit use, but not a requirement, then maybe a future mayor might not, you know, appoint some transit users and the like. And so I think, so I, I think that's the best summary, is that they wanted, they were not necessarily against the process, but they just wanted to prevent any future leader from using latitude to not have those modes or different representations within the commission.
Just as, and I know that we can't go back and pull in former Alder Foster, but listening to the conversations, and when I say it was a very robust conversation, the reason that the vote was to place on file is is that the body wanted the opportunity to really go through the ordinance changes that were being recommended. And they didn't have all the information. Tom, you were not there. And someone else was not there. Mayor, you had another commitment and you were not there as well. And so we have a body of well-versed, experienced individuals who have been on the Transportation Commission for an extended period of time. When former Alder Foster spoke, he talked about eight years of working toward being on the Transportation Commissions and those various modes of transportation. They've spent a lot of time really looking at the interconnectedness of what transportation looks like as we are, you know, going into planning, housing, and all of those. And they wanted the opportunity to really go through that. And so that was the recommendation that they put on file, so they would have the opportunity to come back, have the people in the room. And Mayor, it was very clear how your commitment is toward equity. That came up. Tom, it was mentioned that you were not there in the reasoning. But this is not about a mayor. It is about a policy that we are voting on to make sure that there are representation of transportation users from disability, from all of those modalities. And that's what the Transportation Commission is, certainly when we look at equity, we look at equity across all modalities. And they didn't feel that they had all the answers, all the information to rubber stamp this. And so that's why that body put this on file. And so I would, I would hope that, and I don't know where we are in terms of where we're in the queue, that you would respect that body and give them the opportunity to go back and really look at this and make sure that they are comfortable with this in terms of a long-term commitment for the city of Madison, so.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this a good time for me to make an amendment, to put forward my, my motion?
Yes, Alder, that motion would be in order.
Okay. So I would like to put forward an amendment to the substitute. I did watch the commission's meeting the next day, and I agree, they are, I'm not going to repeat everything that Alder McKinney said, but the spirit of the conversation was again on really trying to avoid watering down the, the, um, decomposition of the committee. However, they also recognize the importance of having the, having the process continue by having the people appointed to the board. And to facilitate that and putting this motion together where we will accept the changes that, that were provided in version two, and put them change back, they restore the conditions of the, of the makeup of the committee. And Haas sent the email earlier this afternoon. It is in your mailbox.
It's so, that's a motion for an amendment. But I'm not sure that everybody has seen your amendment language, which it should be in your emails, but perhaps, could you read the amendment?
Do you want me to read the amendment?
Attorney Haas will read it.
Thank you.
We're going to give the attorney a second here. Is there a willingness to second from anybody who has read it? Alder Vitterver will second, just so it's properly before us. So Alder Figueroa Cole's amendment, in sum, reverts the language so that it does continue to require certain expertise and certain crossover appointments. But would the staggering of the terms would still be corrected? And I think the attorney has it in front of himself now.
Sure. So this would be an amendment to the substitute affecting Section 33.56, subsection 3A2. That subsection would read, "Each member of the commission must be capable of and committed to holding a multi-element system-wide perspective on transportation issues. Moreover, one member must be knowledgeable of equity issues and the needs of marginalized communities. One member must be knowledgeable of issues facing people with disabilities. One member whose primary mode of transportation in the city is the bicycle. One member whose primary transportation in the city is walking. One member whose primary mode of transportation in the city is transit. One member must be a member of the Plane Commission. One member must be a member of the Board of Public Works. And one member who is also a member of the Madison Area MPO Policy Board. The mayor shall give strong consideration to appointing an individual who is also a member of the Sustainable Madison Committee. A single member may satisfy more than one of these requirements. For example, a Plane Commission member whose primary mode of transportation is bicycle can satisfy both the requirements above. Alternative members may satisfy the above requirements." That would replace, as the mayor mentioned, the mayor's, the language in the mayor's substitute, which has more flexibility in appointing members representing those committees and those lived experiences.
Alder Figueroa Cole, did you wish to speak further?
Yes, thank you. So thanks for summarizing, Mayor. So again, in the spirit of keeping, giving the committee an opportunity to review any possible changes at a later date, but at the same time, moving forward with the, with the appointments, I think that that's really where I'm coming from. I just want to get the appointments there, and the full board can decide if they want to review the, the terms of those appointees at future meetings and send us a different resolution that we can tackle that, that will be appropriate at that time. I understand that we have a conflicting schedule with the Board of Public Works, so that those things can be handled later. But today, I would really would like to get this through so we can clear the path for the appointments to be, to be completed on the board, to be made whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there further questions or discussion? Alder O'Healy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is, with regards to appointing some commissioners, how many available positions do we have so that the commissions can continue doing the work?
That's a more complicated question than you would think, Alder. So perhaps it would be useful for me to just sort of lay out a tiny bit of history and what the current status is. You'll recall that this body voted to combine the Transportation Policy and Planning Board and the Transportation Commission. The effective date of that change is when I appoint new members to the Transportation Commission. So our current status is that we still have TPPB and TC, except that neither of them have any Alders appointed to them. Because when the new council was elected, I did not appoint Alders to them, anticipating that I would be appointing to a new Transportation Commission. However, there was an error in the ordinance that the council adopted in terms of this, the, when we, the first round of appointments required staggered terms, so that going forward, we would not have all members of the commission coming up for reappointment at the same time. The staggering included the Alders, which is an error, because the Alder manic terms on a committee always run with the Alders' term. So you can't have them in the staggering. So right now, I'm not able to legally appoint anyone to Transportation Commission. So we still have TPPB and TC, and we can't move forward. So the answer of how many seats are there on Transportation Commission at the moment is, all of them are open, because I cannot legally appoint any of them at this point in time.
So a follow-up question. The TC met last week, or when was the meeting? I don't know. So none of the new Alders were there?
There are no Alder manic appointments to TC right now.
Okay. So my question is to Attorney Haas. So Attorney Haas, in response to Alder Figueroa Cole, is it possible to do the ordinance and then the committee to figure out the ordinance and make sure that's more equitable and more inclusive? But by adopting this ordinance now, is it binding, is it binding that we cannot be able to change?
Well, you can, the council could change appointments going forward, but once appointments are made for a term, those members have a right to serve out that term unless they're removed for cause.
But then that will allow the mayor to make the appointment so that the council can serve on the committee? If the ordinance is passed tonight?
Well, if either the substitute is passed as is, or if the substitute is passed with the amendment, then the mayor would be able to proceed with appointments. I'm sorry, did I not answer your question?
Yes, but I'm still confused, so I'm just?
I think we have a plethora of questions, perhaps, or comments. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was at the transportation meeting. I could participate in the discussion, but I could not vote, because technically, I am no longer on that committee. So there are no Alders that could participate in that body, to be very clear. My question is to Madam Mayor and to our attorney is, is that how can we reestablish, I'm trying to walk through this, because the ultimate goal, what I want to do, is to get this back to the body, to discuss it, because they've had a whole history of going through transportation, and they very, they are very clear on the connection, and they are very experienced. And how do we get it back to them to make these adjustments, make these revisions, and bring it back before the body? How do we get it back to, to that body, the Transportation Commission, which is not in existence? Would you have to reestablish the Transportation Commission? And how can we do that? I don't know. I'm just asking, is that feasible? Because we cannot, on the floor, make this sausage work. It's going to be more complicated and confusing. I'm just asking for help.
I understand, Alder. The old Transportation Commission exists and will until I make new appointments. If you want the old Transportation Commission to discuss this again, you can try and refer it back to them. But they already voted to place it on file, and so I'm not sure why you would get a different outcome.
They placed it on file because they didn't have all the information that they felt that they needed to? that they needed to really make a wise decision on this. That's why they placed it on file. That's exactly why they placed it on file.
So Alder, if you, you're not actually free to do it at the moment, because we'd be too many motions down, but if we dispense with Alder Figueroa Cole's amendment, you could make a motion to refer this back to Transportation Commission. That would be in order, if that was what you wanted.
Okay.
I would just offer as well, that if Alder Figueroa Cole's amendment passes, it, I believe, essentially accomplishes the intent of the Transportation Commission, and they could, at any point in time in the future, take up the conversation about the membership and make a further recommendation to us at that time. So nothing limits their future ability to have this conversation, if they're interested in it.
So voting to support the Second Amendment by Alder Figueroa Cole moves us forward, a vote for it. But if that fails, then it would be in order to refer this back to the committee, Commission. Is that correct? I just want to make sure.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Oh geez. Alder Latimer-Birth.
I just had two questions, because I'm not clear about things. My first question was just trying to remember, was former Alder Foster in objection to the amendment? Is one. And my second question is, for Attorney Haas, is there any way to make temporary appointments so that the process can move forward, but then they can go back and correct the ordinance? Is there anything that, you know, can be done wildly there, since you can legally, in the law, make a motion for just about anything?
We don't have any provision in the ordinance for temporary appointments.
Alder, I hesitate to speak for former Alder Foster, but I don't believe he commented on the amendment.
Alder Field?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Clarifying question, would the passage of this amendment and then this ordinance tonight enable you to make the new Transportation Commission and make appointments and establish that body?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Slack?
So is the amendment, does it have the language about fixing the staggered term issue with the alders?
The amendment does not alter that language. So when you vote on the amendment, you're just voting to change the language back to requiring crossover appointments between Plan Commission, MPO, and BPW.
I'm not sure.
And the underlying substitute has the correct language about the staggered terms.
And so I'm wondering if we can at least pull that part out, about fixing the issue with the alder's staggered terms?
That is essentially what Alder Figueroa Cole's amendment does.
Okay. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. It seems like both, both Version 2 and the amendment give you a path forward to make an appointment. So it's really the debate is whether or not the flexibility that Version 2 allows you in terms of cross-membership is something we as a body want to support, or if we want to go with the amendment, which removes that flexibility and insists that, in all instances, you have to have cross-membership. So both of these provide a path forward. Now, it's my understanding that the Chair of the Transportation Commission actually supports Version, the substitute Version 2, and sent an email to all of us, and that Tom Lynch also gave reasons and a basis why that flexibility might be helpful. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So both of these, whether we go with Version 2, substitute Version 2, or the amendment, give us a path forward where the mayor can make appointments. Both of them address the equity concerns that were spoken to. Both of them address the modality issues, the multimodality issues. The only difference is the cross-membership, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
So I might just be super confused here.
I can't imagine why, Ald.
But am I wrong in assuming that Alder Bennett and I were appointed to the Transportation Commission?
No, alders have been appointed to the Transportation Commission yet, because we have not yet fixed the issue with the staggering of terms.
Right.
Once that is fixed, assuming you all choose to fix it, then I will submit all of the appointments, including the alder manic appointments that were listed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miaté?
I don't know if it's a good time to add or to confuse everybody more, but actually, Attorney Haas circulated a substitution that I had, but if this could be implemented somehow...
It would not be in order to offer a further amendment at this point? We have to deal with Alder Figueroa Cole's amendment first?
Okay. But there's no way I can sneak into her?
No.
All right, thanks.
Alder Figueroa Cole, is your hand up still, or again?
I don't know anymore. I'm trying to tell. I just, again, I just want to clarify, my intent here is to satisfy the wishes of the commission, for them to have time at a later time to review the changes that they were discussing in the meeting, but at the same time, address the staggering terms issue. So I revert it back to the request that the Transportation Commission had sent to us and that we approved already in prior council, and just fixing the problem with the staggering terms. That's all I am trying to do. Nothing is preventing the commission to go to, you know, and the alders that will be serving on that commission, to put forward additional changes at a later time. So right now, we just, my intent is to get the appointments on the table, while at the same time, respecting the wishes of the discussion that the whole commission had, the Chair and all the other members, that, like was mentioned earlier, was a very robust discussion, just respecting their wishes. We don't need to refer it back to them. We can always go back and make changes to ordinances, like we're doing today. So that's really my intention here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak on the amendment. Is there any objection to me speaking from the chair?
Okay, seeing no objection, I just, let me start by saying, I do not feel strongly about this. And so I leave it up to all of you, what you want to do here. But I do want to make sure that everybody understands both what the votes are and what the implications are. And so having laid out, the number one issue that I really hope you will solve tonight is the issue of the staggered terms, so that we can get people appointed to the new Transportation Commission, and that body can get underway. So I really do hope that, at a bare minimum, you pass that. The question of requiring certain expertise, familiarity with equity, somebody who is a transit rider, somebody who's a bike rider, somebody whose primary mode is a pedestrian, I am fully in favor of requiring that for these appointments. If we had, let me not say it that way, previously, when we had multiple transportation bodies and we had certain crossover appointments, it was actually not a problem to do that, because amongst the multiple bodies, we had a lot of people, in which you could be able to find those crossover appointments. There's just not that many people on the new Transportation Commission, and so requiring the crossover appointments, while it is almost possible, is difficult in these initial appointments. So my plan is to have all of the crossover appointments, except for the Board of Public Works, because the Board of Public Works and the Transportation Commission literally meet at the same time. So if you choose to require the crossover appointments, I will need to leave one seat on the Transportation Commission vacant until we figure out a way to have a crossover appointment with the Board of Public Works. That's fine. We can do that. But I just flag for you that that is an issue, and as Director Lynch suggested in his memo, we've been in this position before, where for a year and a half, we could not find somebody to take an appointment to both Plan Commission and Transportation Commission at the same time. And so that seat sat vacant on Transportation Commission. So that's fine, you just need to know that that's possible, right? So if you require these cross-appointments, and then you layer on top of it the need for the expertise, it becomes difficult to find those people. And I'm perfectly willing to try, and I'm sure future mayors will be willing to try as well, but you up the chance that you will have vacancies. And whenever you have vacancies, you up the chance that the body can't meet quorum. And when you can't meet quorum, then they can't do the business of the city and forward things to you. So I don't think it's, certainly not the end of the world, and if you want to require those crossover appointments, it's honestly fine. But we do run some risk there. The other thing that staff have been concerned about is that if we make this initial round of appointments, and, you know, I've found somebody who's willing to take on both Plan and Transportation Commission, bless him, but say he moves to Kalamazoo, am I going to be able to find somebody else who will be willing to take on those two appointments and is a bike rider? Because the new person kind of has to be all three of those things to meet the ordinance. You know, am I going to be able to find a person of color who is primary mode of, is transportation, of transportation is metro? I don't know, right? But that's the risk that we run going forward when we layer on these requirements. The intention is really good. I get it. I do think it's useful to have the crossover. I believe it's good to have our committees talking to each other via members. It's just difficult. And so, you know, I'm absolutely willing to go forward, if that's what you all choose to do. But you just have to know that there will be times when we have seats sitting vacant, because we can't find exactly the right person for them. So whatever you wish, what is before us at the mo, so that was my opinion piece, putting back on my chair hat, because I want to make sure we don't get lost here, right? So we have an initial motion, which is to adopt the substitute. Then we have a motion to amend the substitute, to basically change the language so that all we're doing is correcting the staggering of the terms, right? That's what Alder Figueroa Cole's amendment does. So the first thing that we're going to vote on is that amendment to take us back, all we're doing is fixing the terms. Then we're going to vote again on the amended substitute, unless something else happens, right? Just so, I just want to walk people through. And I'll explain it every step of the way, but Aldo Healy, he wants to speak first. Alder?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for the cross, let's say, Public Works, MPO, and Plan Commission. So those are three commissions that the TC needs to have one person. Is the substitute or the amendment including removing those?
So the substitute removes those requirements.
Okay.
The amendment restores them.
So when we are voting, please let me know which one is which.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Alder Figueroa Cole, I'm, yes, I can't, I can never tell if you've taken your hand down or not, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for sharing your insight on this. So one more thing that I want to add, I mean, one of the priorities of the CCC this term is to definitely work very hard to follow the recommendations of the DFAX Committee and work on the boards and committees reconciliation. So many of the things that you stated there are things that we should be addressing as part of our, as part of us moving forward with that process. So I really appreciate sharing that. I think that is, you know, you have very valid points. That's why, again, I would just rather deal with the staggering terms and have those deep conversations at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I'd just note that Plan Commission, MPO, and BPW are all required committees, so we can't get rid of any of them. All right, I have no other alders in the queue to speak. So, Aldo Rummel?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, looking at the legislative history here, this was introduced on 4/19/2023, when many of us showed up for the first time. And I guess for me, I followed the last go-around, but I feel like you're popping up this really quick. And I don't really, I get how maybe Alder Figueroa Cole's amendment's better, but I am a little bit lost still. And I'm not really sure I have an answer, other than it would be really good to have like a staff presentation of some like, how we got here, and what this is, what are we trying to accomplish with this new TC? Like, why didn't the old one work? I mean, something like that would help my policy mind get to an outcome, as opposed to going, well, it sounds good on the floor. And, you know, I'm just telling you this because, hey, I can.
Thank you, Alder. I will note that Director Lynch does have a memo to you in the Legisdar file that talks about some of the changes, and that the reason we introduced it when we did is because we discovered the error when we were trying to make the appointments. And we wanted to fix that. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak? Okay, so let me say again what we're voting on. We're voting on Alder Figueroa Cole's amendment. If the amendment is adopted, so if, so an "aye" vote is to, I'm just going to simplify. An "aye" vote would be to fix the staggering of the terms, but to require the cross-appointments with Plan Commission, MPO, and BPW. A "no" vote would put us in a situation to fix the staggering of the terms and not require those cross-appointments. I should say again? I should say again. An "aye" vote will fix the staggering of the terms and require the cross-appointments with Plan Commission, MPO, and BPW. A "no" vote will put us on track to fix the staggering of the terms and not require the Aldo Latimer-Birth?
Yeah, so I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but that's my job. So is there any way to fix the terms and then refer it back or for some cleanup? It seems like there's some cleanup, no, because you're saying if it goes back, they already did the cleanup and they just sent it back forward?
It will just delay it, Alder.
Okay.
So it's possible that we could still get there, but it would just delay it, and I wouldn't be able to make appointments until Transportation Commission had dealt with it again.
Okay, so just fixing the terms does not allow you to make appointments and have it as one committee or council, whatever the correct word is?
It does. If you fix the staggering of the terms, either way, I can make those appointments, as long as you pass something that fixes the staggering of the terms.
Okay, so the motion, if we vote yes on fixing the terms, and no on, okay, so if we vote yes on fixing the terms, and no on requiring the cross-appointment, that gives you a lot of flexibility. We can also go yes to fix the terms, and hey, you gotta get, you know, the cross-appointment. Or we could also do yes, fix the terms, and then do a motion to do something else. Is that our choices, in summary?
That's about right.
All right.
Alder Govindarajan?
So just going based off what you explained with the yes votes and the no votes, looking at Version 3, which is Alder Figueroa Cole's amendment... at version three, which is Alder Figaro Cole's amendment, that specifically doesn't address the staggering of the terms. It's just the equity and the crossover appointments. But your amendment, version two, does address.
So it's the difference between a substitute and amendment, right? So mine is a substitute. That's what's before us. Alder Figaro Cole is amending that. So if the amendment passes, she's only amending some of the language, and the rest of the language has a fix for the staggering of the terms.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Bennett.
So is there anything like limiting us from separating the two? Because I think people are getting, like, I know my brain is overloaded right now, just confusion and layers, like the layers you're trying to apply these committees for. But is there any, like, disallowing us from separating those two motions?
Let me put it this way. The vote before you is to decide whether or not you want to require the crossover appointments. So if you want to require the crossover appointments, you should vote "aye." If you don't, you should vote "no." And then we will take a vote about whether or not we should fix the staggering of the terms.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Latimer-Birth.
So is there any way, I guess this is a way, a different way of asking what Alder Bennett is asking, I believe, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but is there any way to reverse, to reverse what comes first? In other words, it seems like the issue is the fixing of the requiring cross appointments. People are uncertain about that. They certainly want it to be within the law of fixing the terms. And I think, I'm not sure, Alder Bennett, you might want to weigh in, but is there any way to switch these two motions so that the item that's at controversy, you know, comes second and the item that's not at controversy comes first?
I don't believe there is a way to switch them. But perhaps it helps to say that Alder Figaro Cole's is the more conservative version. It keeps most of the status quo, and the only thing it would do is change the terms. Alder Slack.
Regardless of how we vote, though, the commission could go back and revisit the policy and make recommended changes.
Yes. At any point in time, any one of you could propose an additional ordinance amendment, or the commission could ask an Alder to propose an additional ordinance amendment. Nothing precludes future action.
I'm leaning towards voting for more flexibility so that the Transportation Commission has time to figure out this puzzle.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole, is your hand up again or still? Let me try one more time. An "aye" vote will require the crossover appointments, a "no" vote will not. I think we're just going to do a roll call. So all those in favor of Alder Figaro Cole's amendment, which would require the crossover appointments with Plan Commission, MPO, and BPW, will say "aye." Those opposed to requiring the crossover appointments will say "no." As the clerk calls your name, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Duncan.
Aye.
Alder Duncan, aye.
No.
Alder Evers, no.
No.
Alder Field, no.
No.
Alder Field, no.
Aye.
Alder Figaro Cole, aye.
Aye.
Alder Govindarajan.
Aye.
Alder Govindarajan, aye.
Alder Harington McKenney.
He's not there.
Alder Harington McKenney will skip. Alder Knox.
No.
Alder Knox is no.
No.
Alder Latimer-Birth.
I'm standing as for my D.O.
No. 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 No.
Alder Miyatzey again.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something. I actually was serving on the Transportation Commission. And I did ask you, Mayor, that if possible, to keep me on the Transportation Commission. And actually, I was taken off. So if there's an opportunity to keep me on there, I would like to definitely keep on serving my constituents by actually making sure that when it comes out, it's going to be equitable for my constituents on the North Side and throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field.
Thank you, Mayor. Transportation is one of those policy areas that is important across the city and across districts. And I do see the strategy for North-South representation, given the network redesign changes. I think it would be very valuable for us to hear from the Transportation Commissioners themselves, particularly those who are transportation policy experts that have been on that body for a long time, to see how they would feel about the geographic representation spelled out in policy.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
Thank you, Alder. Or Mayor. You were a former Alder, though, so not completely unaccurate. Okay, anyways. I appreciate the Alders' efforts to get appointed and represent their constituency. However, I strongly oppose making such an appointment based off of geographic location because transportation is an issue that impacts the entire city of Madison, not just the North Side, not just the South Side. I understand that there are underserved populations in these areas. And that is something that it's the Commission's duty to keep in mind of and for the Alder to also engage with the Commission. However, you can do so without being on the Commission. You can be involved in any BCC without being on the committee. So I don't understand how this will move the city forward. I see this as, I see it as like, you know, providing exceptions for something where we have transportation for every, is an issue for every area. I can make the same argument for my constituency, that we all have, that we have specific transportation issues related to being in the downtown area or specific transportation issues related to being on the West Side or the East Side. It's an entire city of Madison issue. So that's why I don't, I will not be supporting this amendment.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox.
Yes, I just wanted to comment a little bit. There was a lot of constituent concerns about the whole redesign expressed, particularly on the South Side and the North Side regarding equity issues. But more importantly, these two sides of the town are going to be behind as you move forward on the other two sides of town. I think it's going to be important to have some representation as you move forward on this redesign. So I think it is important to have some representation as this thing moves forward. Because ultimately, and I say "if" it ever gets to the North and South Side, and I firmly believe that's an "if", we need to have our input on that in case things pivot. Maybe the federal money might not be there later. We don't know. And we might have to come up with a contingency plan to make that implementation happen. So we need to be, one of us need to be at that table to make sure that, in fact, if that pivots, we have input that's going to affect, pretty much, impact our constituents. So that's what I'd share.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. I cannot get my hand down, so I don't know what to tell you. But since you called on me, I will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
If you can turn the hand down, I appreciate it. I don't know if you're able to do so.
There you go. Staff will take care of you. Alder Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to share a couple of things. So I won't be supporting it for a couple of reasons. I fortunately get to take part in a lot of processes before they even make it to common council. I get to take part in lots of committees and organizations and groups that do a lot of pre-work before it comes this far. And one of those things I got to take part in is what will eventually become this network design, which is redesigning our city's transit. And folks from all over the community were asked to take part in those processes before we got this part, this far. The second thing is, so that process is always open to everyone. You just simply have to sort of want to take part in it. I also want to echo a lot of what Alder Bennett shared in the respect that I too did not get some of the things I would have loved to serve on. But because I did not, I am going to show up at those committee meetings and take part. And it is my understanding that as Alders, we can show up at any, pretty much any meeting and take part. As an avid organizer and someone who spends a lot of time trying to help other folks bring folks together who are a bit inexperienced, I will always offer my help for folks to do that around how to organize your areas to bring them to various meetings around this network redesign. The other thing I want to say is that having taken part in those very early conversations about what our future transit would look like, it has always been a plan for the South and North Side to also get these updates. I don't think I've ever seen anything that say that the South and North Side would not be included. I can be wrong. But I don't think I've ever seen where they were not the eventual, you know, next steps. So I, and then the other thing, it is inequitable to other parts of the city to determine only two districts will, would have folks who would be assigned to that Transportation Commission. That is not how equity works. It's just not how equity works. So that's, that's all.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Slack for the second time.
Yeah, I just want to say again, I don't know that this amendment is something that has to be written into the policy. But because committee work takes a lot of time, we are going to pay more attention to the committees that we're assigned to. And I think in this next term, it is really important to have representation from this body, from the North and the South sides of the city. Because we don't have all the funding secured yet, there's still some unknowns about the North-South line. And I think that representation is important. So I'm just saying that publicly because I think, I'm hoping every effort will be made to make sure that representation is there. I still will vote no on the amendment because I do think we don't want to call out certain districts in the selection of committee members for this, for these positions. But I do hope that that representation will be there.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan.
Thank you. I'm also going to be voting against this amendment. But for many of the same reasons what everyone else has already said. One thing I would encourage all Alders to do is honestly just like have people from your districts apply to committees. I don't know if this is something you already do or not. But maybe this is just something that I've experienced that a lot of students, at least that I've interacted with, really appreciate when you actually go to them and be like, hey, here's an opportunity for you to get involved. And I would assume that is something that is a feeling that remains into adulthood as well, where you appreciate when your elected official comes to you and say, hey, I would love for you to be involved in this. So maybe that's something you all already know already. But I would, I do think there is some value in having representation by district in areas. I think it would be much more stronger coming from the actual constituents rather than sometimes Alders. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miyatzey for the third time, I believe.
I'm not going to belabor the conversation here. I think everybody knows here, our constituents can come here and fill up this room. We can all make a statement right now and try to, try to convince one another. But nothing matters than a vote. Yes, we can go to all committees. We can speak as much as we want. But nothing matters more than voting to get something implemented. So us sitting on a committee and voting to have something implemented is different than just going to a committee and speaking. And furthermore, I even applied to be on the CCEC. And I didn't even get picked or even had an interview. So people can actually go places or be in a committee. But voting makes a difference. So I just want everybody to think about not having us on the table to talk about something that's so important, it's almost like silencing the voices of districts that matter when it comes to this convoluted issue of the North and South BRT, the redesign. So it's important that we, that we are able to sit at the table and actually vote and bring our constituents to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. And lots of, as already been said, I agree with Alder Bennett. And I just want to remind the Alder of the 18th and the Alder of the 14th that representing your constituents on the council floor, when committees make recommendations, commissions do not implement policy. They make recommendations regarding policy. And we, as Alders, can sit on those commissions and debate and influence the vote of a, of a committee. But we don't, on those committees, implement policy. We implement policy here. And you may represent, all of you, your constituents, by the votes that you take here. So I won't be supporting that because it sets a bad precedent that we would lock in a geographical representation on a broad commission like Transportation Commission. But I would encourage the Alders of the 14th and the 18th to network and build coalitions and voting blocks with, with their fellow Alders and with members of the Transportation Commission to advocate the policies that you want to see passed. That's the way things get done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wehelhi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We talk a lot about equity. And looking at the ordinance, we are considering to put equity for the primary people who are using the transportation, whether they are walking or bicycle or using the transit. So those are kind of looking into the equity in terms of how they use the mode of transportation. But when we look at the bigger population in the South and North Side, which is very much underrepresented, and especially as Alder Slack alluded to, it's, the next two, two years is very important. And, you know, with the network redesign and BRT, it's very important that those regions are represented. It doesn't mean it is including the ordinance, but I think, Mayor, you should consider at least having geographic, particularly South Side, for those appointments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris for the second time.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'm not sure if this is the right amendment, either the right way to go about it. But what I'm hearing is that, you know, there's some concerns with the transparency, locking in diversity, equity, inclusion. And I disagree with my colleague that I shouldn't have to form a coalition to give my citizens representation and to be on point with diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think it's a larger issue that we're going to struggle with as a council. We want to all do the right thing and we all want to be together. But it shouldn't be that I got to network with so-and-so and so-and-so. And, you know, Alder Bennett has to like me and so-and-so has to do this and that. And I think that's the underlying current. I mean, that's what I'm feeling. It may be incorrect. But we're trying to, I think that Alder Miyatzey's amendment is trying to address the things that we cannot talk about.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox for the second time.
But I do, Mayor, want to say, there is a network on the South Side. And it's a network that other South Side Alders are quite aware of. And they've been quite vocal on this issue about transportation. So I think the real issue is, do we listen to our constituents? Do we listen to them, take, value their input, and then represent them appropriately? Either way, you cut this. The South Side and the North Side are, we're waiting in the wings to see if, in fact, these resources are going to actually come. And in the meantime, we suffer from route eliminations that we have to adjust to. We have populations that are probably the most vulnerable in the city. And I think it's important that we have that representation with this. And everyone wants to talk about equity. But you all know who's most impacted by these route changes. And we know where those populations are. And we can look at the demographics, look at the income demographics, look at the race and ethnicity demographics. And we know this to be true. So let's not play, placate each other about this is some power politics, about who's more important, whose district is more important. That is not what we're saying. But the fact of the matter is, it's coming later to a district and we may never see it. And we want to make sure that we're at the table to make sure that we come up with some alternatives so that we can experience the same equity that everyone else is going to get. And so that's what I want to point out.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martinez-Rutherford.
Yes, I would like to say that all of us are probably, have requested committees that we didn't get. And a lot of us would like to be at the table at those committees. And knowing that relationships are the way you get things done, building those coalitions is part of the job. Having those conversations with the representatives that are on that body are how you're going to get your agenda pushed across. Having the people of your district come to the body here that make those decisions to represent, and I will listen and I will be a part of it. And if you want to talk to whoever on any committee, you are able to do that and lobby those people to do what you need to accomplish. I am going to oppose this just for that sheer fact because there are things that I would love to be on too that I'm not on. And I know that I can go to whoever's on that committee and talk to them and work. And my relationship with that individual is what's going to bring me across. And I would like to think that every one of us would be able to have that respect to come to each other and say, hey, I really have a problem with this and this is what I want to accomplish. Can you help me? And then when we get in this room, we can yell at each other and have those conversations until we get it sorted. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I hope we don't actually yell at each other. Alder Rommel.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this conversation as I started to think about it. What is the role of geography in our transportation planning? And, you know, we have historically linked land use and transportation and talked about the lack of investment in certain neighborhoods, a lack of infrastructure in certain neighborhoods. And so it's not really, that understanding is not clearly stated in this ordinance. And, you know, in some degree, I can agree with those people that maybe not calling out the specific districts. But I do think that if there were some language that is actually in the, maybe in the original, but certainly in the mayor's substitute about, you know, that an Alder capable and committed to like a system-wide perspective on transportation, you know, mindful of their own district needs, or something that acknowledges that not, you know, it's funny, Alder MGR before said, oh, you know, I'm sure some of you encourage your constituents to sign up. You know, at some point, nobody will accept too many more people from District 6. We're well-represented on transportation. So, but it's not true for all parts of the city. So I think, I think Alder Miyatzey's amendment, while, is it well-intentioned? And I think it raises really an important point. Like, how do we get to the lack of infrastructure and investment in transportation to all parts of our city? We say we want to make it a fair and equitable city. And this is one way that we accomplish it through appointments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tischler.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I support the having North and South Side Alders on the Transportation Committee. And we will have an opportunity when it, you know, with, when it comes time to confirm the Alders who are appointed. So I think, I think in this go-around, I think I, you know, I also agree with Alder Evers about, you know, creating policy, you know, adding, adding districts into this. Although we do this for, I think, for the Alders who do represent near the, near the campus. But, but in this case, you know, Alder Bennett's point is correct. You know, Alders do represent, you know, transportation affects all of the city. But I think, given the fact that we are talking about the BRT and wanting to get something in the North and South Side, I think it'd be in the best interest, at least in this go-around, to have Alders representing the North and South Side. And then again, we can have this conversation again when it comes time to, to confirm. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wehelhi for the second time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Most of my colleagues are a little bit, you know, saying that it's, it's not about Alder Miyatzey's appointment. It's representing South and North Side. Let's be clear. And when we talk about representing people who are using bicycle, and we have a lot of population in North and South who are not represented, then where's the equity now? That's what I'm talking about. And that's where Alder Miyatzey is talking about. It doesn't have to be him. It doesn't have to be Alder South Side. But it's something precedent that we can put in because those are the two communities that are really underrepresented when it comes to transportations. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. So the item before us is Alder Miyatzey's amendment to require the mayor to appoint either the District 14 or the District 18 Alder to the Transportation Commission. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. Then the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Duncan.
No.
Alder Duncan, no. Alder Evers.
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Field. Alder Field, no. Alder Figueroa Cole.
No.
Alder Figueroa Cole, no. Alder Govindarajan. Alder Govindarajan, no. Alder Harrington McKenney.
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKenney, aye. Alder Knox. Alder Knox, aye. Alder Latimer Burris. Alder Latimer Burris, aye. Alder Madison. Alder Madison, no. Alder Martinez-Rutherford. Alder Martinez-Rutherford, no. Alder Miyatzey. Alder Miyatzey, aye. Alder Rommel. Alder Rommel, no. Alder Slack. Alder Slack, aye. Alder Tischler. Alder Tischler, aye. Alder Revere. Alder Revere, no. Alder Vidver. Alder Vidver, no. Alder Wehelhi.
Aye.
Alder Wehelhi, aye. Alder Bennett. Alder Bennett, no. Alder Curry. Alder Curry, no. I have seven ayes, 12 nos.
Seven ayes, the amendment fails. And we are back to the main motion, which is the substitute. Is there further discussion? Alder Latimer Burris.
Can you clarify what we're going to be voting on again? And then is this the one where it's like requiring bikers, you know, to the Alder's point where specific groups are required? And then, yeah, so if you could clarify that, please. We're a little lost, I think.
So the vote before us is to approve the following for the Transportation Commission. And it would require members, one member that is knowledgeable about equity issues and the needs of marginalized communities, one member that is knowledgeable about issues facing people with disabilities, one member whose primary mode of transportation in the city is the bicycle, one member whose primary transportation is walking, and one member whose primary transportation is transit. And then it directs the mayor to make every effort to appoint members who represent the following perspectives, people knowledgeable about equity issues, the needs of marginalized communities, people with disabilities, bicyclists, walkers, transit users. And strongly recommends that the mayor appoint members of other city boards, commissions, or committees directly related to transportation policy, including a member of the Plan Commission, a member of the Board of Public Works, a member of Sustainable Madison Committee, and a member of the Greater Madison NPO Policy Board. And then it fix, it fixes the staggering of the terms to limit those to the resident appointments and not stagger the Alder terms. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it appropriate to do a motion to amend this amendment to say, to, to do something to incorporate a little more weight for the areas of North and South Side, which is, tend to be where we have a lot of disparities and a lot of BIPOC and whatnot? Is it appropriate to add in to that motion so that we can weight that a little bit since the biking's represented? I could go down the list, but why? Would that be in order right now?
Alder Latimer Burris, an amendment would be in order, but you would need to have language.
You write it out and send it to the rest of us. That's how it goes.
So you, so you would need to, to take the language and indicate where you wanted to insert it and, you know, what words you wanted to insert.
Okay.
The attorney can help you with that.
Okay, just a second.
Is there further discussion?
Okay. We do a five-minute break?
Is, Alder Latimer Burris will move a five-minute break. Is there a second? Is there any objection to taking a five-minute recess? Seeing no objection, it's 8:56. We'll be back at 9:01.